Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. Welcome. We're glad you're all here. Thank you for being here. Our first item on tonight's agenda is a presentation with regard to our community engagement last year review. For that, we welcome our community engagement manager, Angie Sharp, and the Assistant City Administrator, Jeff Rider.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You have the floor. Thank you.
Appreciate the time this evening. We are excited to present to you an update on how we did this year and to talk to you a little bit about our use of ZenCity, which is our social platform for data analytics. So what we're going to talk about tonight are some highlights from 2023, some things we're very excited about, some of our new initiatives, also a report on how our social media is doing. Obviously, in today's world, community engagement through social channels is very important. Look at our community survey and what ZenCity is doing for us, and then we'll open it up for a discussion at the end. So with that, Angie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. And, Your Honor and counsel, thank you so much for giving me some time to present our 2023 Year in Review to you tonight. So six months ago, I was sitting here giving you an overview of how ZenCity is helping us with our community engagement efforts, as well as our latest community survey data. Tonight, I plan to give you our 2023 Year in Review, as well as the next round of community survey results. Then, in six months, we'll start this cycle all over again. So we have a lot to get through, so we're going to start with our highlights of 2023 for the community engagement team. So in January, we started streamlining all of our social media platforms. Now, years ago, the best practice was that for anything you had, any business, any organization, all your departments, you'd have a social media platform for everything. Everyone was on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, you name it. But it's really not the case anymore. It's really been proven that you need to be more strategic about what platforms you're on and which ones you're using for which messages you're using. So if you're announcing job postings, for example, you're going LinkedIn, you're maybe not going to Nextdoor, things of that sort. So we have really applied that quality over quantity philosophy when it comes to social media, and we are now down to 20 platforms across the city. Our big highlight of the year in my eyes for February was that the City Council approved our brand guidelines. You can see here some of the screenshots of some of the pages in that 50-page document that we worked with Tag on. Everything from brand voice to how to properly use our logo, our colors, our fonts, best practices for social media, and how to apply this brand on digital and printed collateral. This is on the end drive. It's always available for you. If you ever need a copy of it, want to go through it page by page, I'm always happy to do so.
What I'd like to interject here is the brand guidelines was an initial step we really needed to accomplish in order for us to move forward with more of that centralized approach for our communications. So before we started to make decisions that may affect the long term of the city, we really wanted to have that guideline, that structure in place where all of our departments understood kind of the process and the importance of the look and the feel of what we're doing. So getting that enacted was really that big first step, and I think fundamentally, we've done a great job here with our community engagement team, as well as our communications monthly meetings that we have with all of the staff to really start to effectively implement those guidelines.
And we're starting to spread the message and the purpose of brand guidelines even beyond our city departments, which we'll talk to you about in just a couple moments. But first, we go to March, which was when we were talking about all things budget. Go back one slide. We did that through two totally different kinds of videos. One, that was very serious, a nice sit-down in council chambers between Mayor Bob and our Finance Director, Jason Schatt. And we also did the March Madness of city government and city finance and city budgets with our final four video that we did with Coach Scott Naumann as our commentator and Jason. So we had a lot of fun with that, a very good example of us creating videos for two different kinds of audiences. Kind of the more serious one, that was a 13-minute video that we did discussing our budget situation for 2023, and then maybe the more tongue-in-cheek one to kind of engage a different sort of audience. In April, we wrapped up one of our most successful communications campaigns of the year. That was announcing and informing 1,740 homes about garbage and recycling route changes. The graphics you see on your screen there are snapshots of the postcards that we used, in addition to our normal communications tactics and tools. We also placed a sticker on the handles of garbage carts. We designed those, and our awesome Public Works crews helped us put those on the affected residents' garbage carts.
The great thing about that was, is we heard very little, if any, hue and cry from the public then on, you know, their routes being on the wrong day, or they did not know. We actually really did a great job with Brian's help as well in his department, Chris Hatfield, of understanding the addresses, understanding those route changes. And I don't believe we had too many real issues with people not knowing that their route change was occurring on the day that it happened. So we were very, very productive with that campaign.
And as we wrapped up that campaign, we started another big one, which was the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan. We started using a new tool through ZenCity called Engage. So this is called an Engage page. It's not a website. It's a webpage that is supposed to be consistent and complementary to your website, but it's kind of a one-stop shop for any project to focus on community engagement. So you see the overview of what the project is, a really nice quote here from Kim, a timeline of what we did throughout the project. This is also how people signed up for focus groups. When we had our survey, which we're going to be hearing about after our presentation, we put that here as well, and we could even put project updates. So just another great tool that ZenCity offers for us. Okay, moving on to May. In May, we collaborated with Parks and Rec to launch their brand-new logo that you can see here. That's more modern, high-res, and consistent with our brand. We are also coming to the end of our flood fight in May, and so we created a series of these videos to kind of explain to residents about what the river was doing, what our crews were doing, how we were keeping people and places dry, et cetera. This was just a really great example of how we used video and also our drone, because of our certified drone pilot, Jay Foster, to show the spots in our city that residents would not otherwise be able to see, and also show some of the efforts, like us putting in the permanent flood wall at Leech Park, for example. We also created another Engage page in this month, and that was for the Comprehensive Plan Update. I'll show you that quickly, even though we showed this to you in August as well. Again, very consistent, same kind of style as the Parks and Rec page, but some added interactive things on there, like the interactive map videos, things of that sort. In June, we did a lot of celebrating in the city, all in one day, actually. We celebrated the city's 120th birthday. This is a great video of the mayor singing "Happy Birthday" just beautifully to a crowd in face field for our wonderful birthday bash that we held with everybody. And that morning, we had the groundbreaking ceremony, of course, of the landing. We also revamped that webpage to make it even more engaging to anybody who wanted to get updates about this project. So we have an email address that people can email if they have any questions about the project. All of our concept designs are here, a nice timeframe, timeline, our live stream of the construction happening at the landing, and then all the updates that we get along with time lapses, videos, videos, and more videos.
The important thing about these Engage pages and these, I guess I'd call them microsites, if you will, within our website, specific to projects, I know this has been a question quite often that councils had about, you know, we need updates, or our community is asking us questions about projects. These are all on our website, and we're using that website as our grand central station, if you will, for all things cities. So if you ever have a question from a resident that you are compelled to ask us about, direct them to our website. If they cannot find it, I know Councilmember Sexton is very good about this. He'll direct someone to our website. If they can't find it, he'll call and say, hey, we couldn't find it on the site. Either where is it, or you need to get stuff together and get it up on the website. It is really our central station, if you will, for all things that we do relative to social media and communications.
Okay, we're moving into July now. July was, of course, all about the Fourth of July, as we communicated about the festivities going on around the city, as well as livestreamed our parade on our YouTube channel. And speaking of our YouTube channel, we did something really cool in August. We started a livestream on the I-74 Bridge by placing a camera on top of the Isle of Capri Tower. So this is a live view of our bridge right now in a beautiful sunset debut. This is now our top livestream with more than 1,494 views just in the month of January alone. However, our top livestream for the year of 2023 was our livestream of the landing construction site, which had 4,426 views. In September, we organized an event and communicated a great collaboration in our community. The downtown Bettendorf organization spearheaded the bike racks project between the welding departments at Bettendorf High School and Davenport West High School. We had a great riverfront event, a sunny September morning, where all the students got together to show off the great bike racks that they put together. And we also facilitated a meeting about our brand with the partner groups of Parks and Recreation. So at this point, we felt we were six months into establishing our brand guidelines. We felt our city departments were getting really comfortable with them, and so we decided to expand that into some of our partner groups. Parks and Rec has a lot of them, which is a wonderful thing. They've got the band, the Dog Park Alliance, the Conservation Committee, Trails Committee, Friends Foundation. So we got them all together in one room, showed them our new brand guidelines, showed them their role in that, how we could help them, and then started the process of updating all of their logos or word marks into modern, high-res ones that are consistent with the city and Parks and Rec. So these are the old ones, and these are the ones that they have today.
Uniquely, we had a lot of question in common over the years about these a la carte organizations, if you will. They all have subcommittees. They all march to their own drum, if you will. And there was really no consensus around what they do, why they do it, and their alignment or collaboration with the city. So I give Angie a lot of credit for bringing all of these folks together in one room and simply saying, we want to work with you. That was a big initiative. I don't think what we deduced out of that was there was really no ill will or malintent. It was just people were doing what they felt they needed to do to help their organization. By virtue of bringing them all together, a couple of them were looking at revamping logos. We said, just hold on, let's pump the brakes and work together on this. And then, at the end of this, we're going to put a blue seal on this that you can see here that says endorsed by the City of Bettendorf. If an organization doesn't want to work with the city, or it's not an organization that has the best interest of the city at heart, we certainly would not endorse them. So in this regard, they all know, and it's great credibility for them, to go out in the public and say, look, we are a faction of the city, if you will. They endorse us, and we do work with them. So it shows great harmony, great collaboration, and bringing them all together in one room, I think, was a minor success in and of itself.
Plus, they look pretty. In October, we helped the library revise their logo, speaking of prettiness. We also wrapped up our annual Citizens Academy. That's the center photo that you can see here. We also held, I think, the rainiest ribbon cutting on record in Bettendorf as we partially opened Forest Grove Drive. This picture is very small and hard to see for a reason. Let's just say the road did open, and I survived being almost hit by a front loader. If you know, you know. If you don't, we can get together and talk about it another time. We don't have time for it tonight. In November, we achieved the Triple Crown through the Government Officers Finance Association with our design of the city's first-ever popular annual finance report. And we also launched a new webpage called Living in Bettendorf, which was a great collaboration with our Communications Committee, which meets monthly representatives from all city departments, a nice one-stop shop for everything you need to know about living in Bettendorf, whether you're new to our city, which we know many people are and will be, or if you've lived here for a while and just want one place to go to get everything you need. And finally, in December, we organized another wonderful and festive "Tis the Season" event for our community seniors, and thanks to everybody in this room who volunteered to help make that a great success. This is a very busy slide, but we wanted to show you a list, or at least the gist, of what a day in the life of our community engagement team is constantly and consistently working on. We also want to share an exciting announcement that our weekly Mayor's Message that we do with Mayor Bob is about to hit its 200th video next month in March. So that's a really, really big highlight that's coming up for 2024, but we thought we would announce it now as well.
Yeah, a couple of things on this slide here. 200 Mayor's Messages. If you recall, we started that initiative to give folks an update on COVID-19, where the numbers were trending, things like that. It was just a regular recurring opportunity for folks to engage with their government and talk a little bit more about that pandemic that we had going on. Mayor Gallagher had the idea that, you know what? People are watching these things. They're responding to it. Why don't we continue to have a regular message? And here we are, some three and a half years later, and we're still doing Mayor's Messages. So we appreciate Mayor Bob and anyone who does participate in those messages.
I haven't had lunch on Thursday at noon for 200 weeks.
Nobody would know.
The cool thing about these videos is, you know, Mayor Gallagher's willingness to get out and about, as you see with Lieutenant...
And put on anything.
...Patinity in Barnhouse here. The reality is, we can sit Mayor Gallagher at a desk, and it's very staged, but getting our people in front of the camera with Mayor Gallagher to talk about their specific areas of expertise really resonates with folks. And quite often, we take for granted the work we do. The consumer, or the resident, if you will, really likes to know all the basic information and how things operate in the city. So nothing's really too small, and I think a lot of our departments have really started to embrace that, and we're doing a lot more of those videos. And before we move on really quick, Mayor G., nice helmet.
That was pretty awesome.
You see a lot of bullet points here. We're not going to belabor these. They're in your packet, but I think it's important to note a couple of things. Our community engagement staff does a great job of doing all of the communications initiatives that you all have come to grow and trust and expect. But, you know, I would be short-sighted if I didn't talk about some of the bullet points on here a little bit more. The staff that we have also works on our sculpture program with Quot City Arts every year, creating new murals in Bettendorf, the extreme cleanup initiatives we do, obviously, "Tis the Season: State of the City," things like our birthday bash, our zip code party. There's just a number of things that we do throughout the year to support our departments and to do all those other initiatives as well that might not be traditional communications.
And we did put out this fire very successfully.
I'm panicked. I'm like, I got to get it out. And he's like, no, 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 let it burn.
It was wonderful, great video. One more bullet point that we want to add to this day in the life is that we run communications campaigns on almost every message that we put out, just to organize it all in one area. We had more than 70 communication campaigns in the year of 2023. We have a checklist that we use to make sure that we're connecting with all of our audiences and using the appropriate tactics and tools. We highlighted a couple of those in that bulleted list there. I've included here an example of a graphic that we created for our communications campaign, as well as the email that I send out to my team, or those who requested the message, or those who might be affected by the message that we're putting out. All right, Section 2 is all about social media. I'll quickly go through this, and then we will get on to the ZenCity Community Survey. So this is how much our social media has grown from January 2023 to February 2024. You have the specific numbers in your packets. On Facebook, the city Facebook page grew 19%, and we had two major milestones in this 13-month period. In June, we passed 10,000 followers, and just last month, we passed 11,000 followers. Our police Facebook page grew by 7%, fires grew by 14%, the library grew by 8%, the family museum grew by 8%. It is our largest social media platform across the city with 13,867 followers. Our Parks and Rec Facebook page grew by 24%, and the Palmer Hills Facebook page grew by 8%. On Instagram, our library, family museum, and Parks and Rec pages all grew by an average of double digits. YouTube was a really, really big one for 2023. The city's YouTube page grew by 100%. We doubled our subscribers to 607, and in the year 2023, we had 53,286 views on our page.
I would just like to interject here. 607 subscribers may not seem like that much, but the fact that we grew 100%, we had over 300 last year, we're over 600 this year. Just two years ago, we had 17 subscribers on YouTube. So the importance of video and video production cannot be understated. I would not be surprised if that number's 100% again next year. Things like what we're doing right now. We're livestreaming this to the public as we speak right now. Folks engage with YouTube far more than any other social platform right now because of its video presence and what people want to see. So that's going to continue to be a platform we're going to see grow for many, many years.
And it's one that we think deserves time and energy in. We put together a really great summary of the snowplow efforts from the latest snowstorms, and that's still our top YouTube video today. We went into snowplows overnight. Jeff did, Jay did the very next day, and put that together. It took time, but it's really paying off. The other top videos on YouTube are our Mayor's Message. Our new K-9 Lewis was our top Mayor's Message of 2023, as well as the airshow pilot from Bettendorf, Captain Raz Larson. The library is also seeing immense growth on YouTube, 146% increase. And we're seeing it on some of our other social media platforms as well. On LinkedIn, a 59% increase in followers. Nextdoor, which is an interesting one. We've had a Nextdoor account for a while, but it wasn't very active until over the summer. So we started really putting some more emphasis on it, including it in our communications campaigns. We post on it daily, if not more than that. And then we started tracking those numbers, and we've had a 6% increase in our neighbors from August to February. It's 9,491 neighbors today. Furthermore, ZenCity has also seen the value in Nextdoor, and they have established a relationship with them. That means we can get more analytics from this social media platform, as well as all the others that ZenCity gathers data from. When it comes to Twitter, now called X, we are posting regularly, but perhaps not as much emphasis on this social media platform as others. We did have a slight increase in followers, about 0.4%, but not due to anything we've done. There has been a decrease in followers across a lot of that social media platform for many changes that have happened there over the last year or so.
That's right. If you're in the know on Twitter, you know that what Mr. Musk has done has created some controversy and change in that platform. So we are not an anomaly with only that small percentage of growth. Most Twitter users are decreasing, and they're unsubscribing just because of other issues outside of our control.
Yeah, Councilmember Sexton.
Oh, thank you. I'm not a big user of these social platforms, but I do have a question. Like on Nextdoor, I know that there are a lot of false information put out there or questions where people are questioning things, and they obviously don't have the right answer. Do we respond to those separately?
Yes.
Or some of them probably don't deserve a response, but...
I think you just answered your own question. So we receive questions daily, whether it's through Messenger, whether it's through Nextdoor, general email. If it's a negative derogatory or just unproductive question that is just malicious in some way, we categorize it as such and generally don't respond. Or if someone does not want to give us their name or contact info, then we respond as such and just don't put a lot of value in it. If it's a question that has some merit, we certainly respond in a very timely manner. I know Denise monitors our social media, and Denise will push that out to whoever the right channel is, whether it's Brian, whether it's police, and we'll get an answer in pretty quick time for them. And the good peace of mind that I have, I think a lot of our staff has as well, is when we hear comments from folks that they did not expect, one, to either get a phone call back, or two, to get a response within 24 hours, because there's many of our peers in the industry that just don't respond. So you generally get a real person, you get a real response, and you get it in a timely manner. So, yeah, we quantify whether it's real and fair, and we give a good response or not.
Thank you. Following up on that, if we see something on a platform, would you rather we alert you to it and let you respond to it, or would you rather we take first shot at it?
That's a good question.
I think that's a fair question that we could probably talk a little bit more about, Greg. It's, if we feel we're confident in answering the question administratively, we generally will. If you have a question that you feel you can answer, by all means, please do so. You do not necessarily have to vet it through us, but if there's a little bit of controversy or contention, or maybe a difference in opinion amongst the staff and/or council, that's something that we would certainly want to talk more about. I think it's more case by case.
Do you have a preferred procedure for us to employ?
I do not. You're the council. I think you have full discretion to answer any question you want.
I appreciate that, but I want to be a part of the team, too.
Which is great.
Thank you.
Which is great. I mean, if it's a docile, harmless subject matter, by all means, please feel free to respond. If it's something that we need to discuss a little bit more, I would tell you to contact Angie, and she gets that disseminated out, and we get a productive response, at which time you are all part of that conversation as well. We would not respond without you knowing.
Just to give you an example, a couple of weeks back, some lady posted on Nextdoor that she was upset, that she didn't feel like she got adequate notice of a plating or a site plan issue up by her neighborhood. And so, I saw the sign, as I popped in and said, yeah, I saw the sign, and here's what's going on. I can do that, but all I'm doing is pulling up the P&amp;Z agenda and looking through it and regurgitating it back. I can also just spit it over to, send it over to you guys, and then you can handle it. So either way, I want to help in the process, but I don't want to interfere in the process. Whatever you guys would prefer, I'll be happy to go along with.
If a constituent requests an answer or asks you a question directly, I think we're very comfortable with you responding directly if you have the answer. In that case, we would have given a similar response to what you did as a credible source, as the council member. I think you handled it very eloquently. I think that's totally fine. We duly, we do appreciate you wanting to vet that through us as well. I think it's just a case-by-case scenario, and if there's controversy around it, I think we just work together.
I think in most cases, at the end of the day, if we can just point people to our website, usually, hopefully, they can find the answer that they need. But in some cases, they can't, so I also understand that as well.
Greg A.
Hey, Jeff, can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead. At least.
A lot of times, maybe to Greg's example, we'll get a question from some citizen. It might be a good idea. I like it when we get an email out to the other council members of, hey, I got this question from a citizen. You might get a call on it also, you know, just kind of an FYI. I don't know how you guys feel on that, but...
I think that's a really valid point, that if one council member makes a response, but the rest of the council members aren't necessarily following that, because they're not on that app, it makes some sense for us to be able to put that out and communicate that to the rest of the councils so that they don't think they're obligated to respond, because there's somebody already responded. So, but to Jeff's point, if you feel like you want to answer it, the only thing I would suggest is that somebody get copied on that so that we could circulate that to everybody else, so they don't know, they don't have to respond. And as you know, sometimes these folks are, they'll either decide tonight that they're going to get your answer, may not like that, and shoot it to three or four council members. Or occasionally, they'll want to see what response the mayor has and then want to shop that answer around. So there's no set rule, but knowing, having us knowing what's out there in the response, we can then let everybody else know, we've already responded once or twice already.
And consistency, yep.
Greg?
This may be just my problem, but I don't think so. I am so hinky now about answering anything on my email, because I probably have the record for how many times I've had to do retraining. It's true.
It's true.
But there's always, almost every email now has. You don't often get an email from this person, so I'm like, okay, I'm not going to open it. And then, it's somebody with a probably legitimate question to... I know that's not really related to this, but...
Well, in that regard, if you're worried about it being a phishing alert or some sort of scam alert message...
Forward it to Jeff, and he can take the phishing alert.
Gee, thanks. Appreciate that, Mr. White. No, I would suggest that you hit the button that says Phishing Alert. That'll go to our IT department. If it's real, they'll disseminate it to the departments then for us to work through that question. If it is a phishing alert, they'll notify you right away that, congratulations, you passed the test. So just hit Phish Alert if you think it is.
Have you ever seen that email, Greg, where it pops up and says, congratulations, this was us trying to trick you?
I've never seen that.
You're getting tested, so you should see that once in a while.
Okay. Well, I'll talk to you guys about that later, but I hope it's not just me.
No, no, it's a legitimate concern.
Well, just have peace of mind in knowing that if you hit Phish Alert or you send that to IT, they will get that distributed out then to the right channels for us to answer if it is a valid question.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So we are celebrating a lot of growth on social media. We are also celebrating a lot of growth on Alert Iowa. This has been a really great tool for the Scott County Emergency Management Agency, for them to send texts, emails, make phone calls about severe weather and emergency situations. But in addition, their non-emergency arm of this platform has been really effective for cities in Scott County to use as well. We can create our own lists. You see those lists right in front of you. We have 18 of them in total, and then people can opt in to use whatever list that they would like to and get the updates that they need. So similar to Nextdoor, we weren't really using Alert Iowa to its max. We did not start tracking those numbers until a few months ago, but in five months, we had a 28% increase in the number of users opting into our lists. And again, I included specific numbers of how many people are on each of these lists in your packet.
I think it's, I'll just hit on this really quick. The numbers in Alert Iowa, as you'll see, we have over 17,000 individuals that are opting into certain lists. There could be some overlap there if they opted for more than one list, but it's very safe to say over 10,000 people have taken advantage of this text alert system. And one item of note, too, we do not trump EMA. If there's an emergency, whether it's a tornado warning or something of that effect, you'll still get that from EMA. We'll never send out anything relative to emergency situations. We only send things out that are specific to Bettendorf that are the non-emergency types of text alerts. So it's a great tool.
Get on this. It's really a great tool. I don't care if you opt into any of these, but the emergency info is really good.
It's paramount for our community. You get everything, and just in fact, prior to this meeting, five minutes before, everyone got a text notification that this meeting was starting. If you'd like to watch it, click on the link here. So we encourage the entire community, whether you're Bettendorf or anywhere, to... to sign up for our text alerts, just to see what's going on in Bettendorf. You know, it could be anything from a club fitting at Palmer Hills to the next mayor's message, anything in between.
But also it'll keep you safe. It's a win-win, Alert Iowa really is. All right, so we are tracking our social media numbers every single day, every single month, but Zen City is tracking them really every minute and every hour. So for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through Zen City's year in review that they gave us, but just know that they also have seen our social media platforms grow and some of our unofficial channels growth, which would be like the TV markets and their social media pages, and then our official channels growth as well. The main message there is if we ever post any kind of picture and want lots of engagement, post a picture of the bridge at sunset, it will always get the best engagement you could ever have. We are using Zen City more than ever before, but there really is so much more for us to unearth. When I started with the city in June of 2022, Denise and Jeff were certainly doing as much as they could with this platform. I took it on, I really kind of tried to dig into all the different tools that they have, experimented a lot. That's kind of how Engage came to be because that was a new tool that no one was really using. We are a great partner to Zen City and vice versa. Jeff just presented on their behalf at a conference last year. They reach out to me to test some new tools. So we really hope to continue that relationship and do even more with Zen City in the future. So that year in review is in your packet as well for you to review. Just a couple of pages and if you want to go through it together, we absolutely can. So that brings us to our community survey. We're finally there. As most of you recall, back in August, we decided to use Zen City's community survey as our new survey tool for a number of reasons.
Yeah, so as you recall, it's more cost effective one to utilize Zen City versus the National Citizen Survey. It's saving us approximately $18,000 annually to utilize a tool that we already have within their plethora of different resources. So as part of our contract, we do not have to pay the National Citizen Survey now, which is great. Duly, it's a very contemporary model. They send this out unsolicited. You can go in and take it at your leisure. We do not skew any of the data or solicit it ourselves. We want a completely unbiased approach. And then furthermore, this to Angie's point, it's data that's collected in real time. So the numbers as far as performance go, they ebb and flow throughout the year, but you always get real time data on what people are thinking in our community and areas of focus that they would like to see us emphasize more. So it's just a very contemporary tool and it's much more efficient for us.
So we're already on our third cycle of the community survey. We started it in July 2022, right after I joined the city. And at that point, we had an 83% overall satisfaction score for the last half of 2022. Six months later, we received our cycle for the first half of 2023 and our satisfaction score went up to 87%. And we are very excited to share with you that after our latest cycle, the last half of 2023, it has gone up to 90%.
And you'll see on there, 478, 457, 411. All three of those numbers with 411 being the lowest, that's actually a higher number of responses than we got through our National Citizen Survey. So this organic data that we're collecting unsolicited is actually yielding higher numbers of survey responses than what we got before as well.
Can the same person perform the survey or take the survey twice?
No, these are unique visitors.
Okay, so they've got the whatever digital info.
Yeah, the fingerprint. These are the main measures of satisfaction in our city. Three questions all saw increases in this last cycle. We want to note that we were told that 75% on that third question, which is how likely are you to be living in Bettendorf five years from now? 75% and an increase of 7% is very high according to Zen City, mainly because a lot of people, especially in our younger demographics and our older ones, maybe don't know if they'll be living in Bettendorf five years from now. Here is who responded to the community survey in this latest cycle. You will notice that in Ward Two, it says no score to report. There were people who responded to the survey in Ward Two, just not statistically enough for a valid sample size. And here is who responded to the survey broken down by age, education, ethnicity, gender, and income. Zen City pointed out again, this 82% score up here on the age range of 18 to 34 is very, very good. When it comes to community characteristics, where we get that overall satisfaction score from, we have two slides to show here. This one is a list of the characteristics that had more positive response in this cycle compared to the last cycle. And they put in bold a couple of the ones they wanted to highlight. Access to quality education, overall cleanliness and maintenance, sense of overall safety, and acceptance of residents of all backgrounds. This one has the list of characteristics that had a little bit more of a negative response or just dipped down in percentage a little bit. But this really can help us decide what we need to dive into. Maybe it helps us steer our goal setting conversations in different directions. It helps us as community engagement, help with messaging when it comes to certain messages. And we also think it's worth reminding that you can always add some specific questions to the community survey. So for example, on the topic of affordable housing, we could always add a question to our next community survey to get a little bit more information from our residents about that topic.
Yeah, that's a good point. So there are some, I guess, more negative sentiment on some of these, but we have to just decipher at that point, how much of it is the city of Bettendorf's work? You know, access to affordable housing. Can we certainly try to address that situation? We can, but we're not residential developers per se. So the satisfaction score may be more indicative of our community, not specifically our city. So we just got to take those things into account. And as we button up here, the survey side of things as well, I'll just add as well, we're going to give you these results now in February, that's our goal. And we'll do this again in August to give you a six month update. That way hopefully that gives you some time as we go into goal setting in the fall to really look at the survey results and use those to our benefit.
Zen City always gives us a characteristic that we should maintain as well as focus on. For the maintain category, overall cleanliness and maintenance. And the focus on category goes to the ability of residents to give input to the Bettendorf government. We talked about this a lot with our Zen City partners. They did point out that 49% is not bad and is most likely the same in other communities that are in our cohort. Nevertheless, it might just be something we want to give some extra attention and energy to. This is the part I know a lot of you get excited about and appreciate. How do we compare to others? So these are the communities, some of them that are in our cohort. And this is what Zen City uses for its analysis of benchmarking our data. So this is how we compare. The overall resident satisfaction in Bettendorf is 18% higher than its cohort. And the cohort and national are the same at 72%. For this graph and the next one, you're going to be looking for the blue dot, which represents us. So this is all of those community characteristics and how we compare to our cohort as well as nationally. So you kind of see some of the the big space, the big gaps, access to quality healthcare services, education, sense of overall safety, parks and recreational amenities, waste and recycling services. So a lot to celebrate. And finally, the community survey asks two open ended questions that you can view in the feed of Zen City at any given time. What is your favorite part about living in Bettendorf? And what is the one thing you would change about Bettendorf? Overall, people in the city of Bettendorf love this community. They love our schools, they love our city, and they feel safe. I love seeing that that safe word is nice and big there. When it comes to what they would change, it's the word that we always see on everything, tax. But you also see some of those other words like affordable and housing. But my favorite word comes up again and again. It did in the last cycle and it did here, and that is the word I would change, nothing. So we went through a lot tonight. We have a lot more that's in your packet that we presented to you tonight as well. We're happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Questions, Greg or Greg?
Your honor, I'm going to try to have questions all the time. I appreciate your indulgence. Do you have a sense of how many views per month across all platforms the mayor's message gets out to?
We can certainly gather that data for you.
It seems to me that he does such a great job with this that if there's ways we can promote it further, that would be a good thing for us to do. If there's some way the council can help do that, I'm happy to do that too.
I think the other really cool thing about Mayor's message.
They're all sharing it each month.
As we are, we also embed that video into different sections of our website. And so it might have this many views today, but somebody might find that video months down the line about something and then it'll get some more views, which is kind of nice. So a lot of the subjects that we do choose, they sometimes are timely, but in some ways are very evergreen too, which is nice that we can reuse them.
I'd just be curious whether it's in the scope of 100 views or 1,000 views or 10,000 views each month. A way of measuring.
Closer to 1,000, it is not 10. And it's way more than 100. It's at least five or six, some of the messages track better.
Yeah.
We do have that data, yes.
To me, as long as you've got a great spokesman, you ought to push it. Then one that's slightly off topic, your honor, when the logo was endorsed by the city. Years and years ago, endorsed by the city had a connotation for our insurance providers. And I was just wondering if the endorsed by the city meant the same thing now that it meant 15, 20 years ago, which meant they were covered by the city's insurance policies as opposed to affiliated with the city, meaning they weren't covered under the city's insurance policies. Slightly off topic, just curious.
That's a simple one to find a solution to as well.
They are not covered by the city's insurance policies. All of those extraneous committees from Parks and Rec have alternate insurance, their own insurance.
There's a resolution out there somewhere that talks about that. If we need to change it, we should.
We can certainly do that and that's a very simple fix. If there's a connotation that would suggest that we somehow have liability, we could certainly change to a word that's more supportive versus liable. That's an easy fix to make. That's a great catch.
Yeah, it's just something from the years gone by. Thank you, your honor. You betcha, thank you. Questions, Lisa, any questions?
Nope, nope.
Nick?
All good, thank you, your honor.
All right. Lady and gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate your work, good job. Let's move on to our park strategic plan. For that, we welcome our Director of Culture and Recreation, Kim Kidwell, and Linda and Ron Wastin, who have helped us with this park's strategic plan as well as other things here in the city. Thank you for being here, Wastins. We appreciate you and your hard work. Kim, you've got the floor.
All right, thank you very much, your honor and council. Take me a second here to get my papers out. Ready to inundate with you with a little more data on this committee of the whole evening. We are not going to go through the entire plan. Obviously, all of that is in your packet, all of the information in the environment, the scan, the survey. What I'm going to do is just kind of give you an overview of the process. Just pick out some bullet points. And then Ron and Linda Wastin are here for additional questions or if they have any additional input since they facilitated the survey and the plan itself. So we will just get going. So in the spring of 2023, the city of Bettendorf Parks and Recreation Department contracted Wastin and Associates to facilitate the organization's formal strategic planning process. This process began with engaging eight focus groups throughout the month of April of '23. The focus groups were attended by 35 members of the community and the data collected was used to determine current perceptions and future desires for the organization. Focus group data formed the foundation for the 34 question survey, which was available on the city's website, sent via email distribution list that we had in house. Also, as you saw from Angie's presentation, it was on the Zen City Engage page as well. And we also had paper copies available at the community center, the library, and the family museum for those who prefer to fill it out on paper. We had 2,469 people who completed the survey to validate or alter the perceptions gleaned from the focus group participants. Once the data was collected, a strategic planning team composed of Parks and Recreation staff, some city council members, city administrators, and members of the park advisory board met on three different occasions to develop the plan. The key findings from the survey were residents were satisfied or very satisfied with almost all aspects of city parks. Areas cited that could be improved were restroom facilities, followed by safety, lighting, and maintenance. Residents largely enjoy city facilities. Palmer Hills Golf Course rated at the highest quality, followed by Frozen Landing, and then the Bettendorf Community Center came in third. Noted that all of these, this order of things that were highlighted, there was only a 1.1% difference between each. The differences likely emerged just from this is where people frequent the most. With respect to programs, activities, and events, respondents were very satisfied. Of the listed Parks and Recreation events, most respondents attended the Bettendorf Fourth of July Festival, followed by the Bettendorf Park Summer Park Band Summer Concert Series and the Movies in the Park put on by the Recreation Department. St. Patrick's Day Special Population Dance and Yoga in the Park received the least number of selections. Again, those are programs that happen just once or very infrequently. When asked to rate the quality of the amenities of the parks, trails and park maintenance had the highest weighted averages. Basketball courts, restrooms rated the lowest. However, there were very minimal differences among even these responses. Residents would also like to see the city provide more funding and support to Parks and Recreation and to provide more adequate access to parks and recreational facilities to all parts of the city. Following that, we had planning sessions. The planning sessions used the environmental scan as one point of data. Through discussion, the group identified various strikes, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the Parks and Recreation Department. A discussion of aspirations concluded that providing a premier experience for residents should be attained. From these planning sessions with park staff, there were three strategic initiatives that emerged to help form the plan. The first one is to create processes and expectations for continual improvement. Bettendorf Parks and Recreation needs a formalized process for continual growth. The purpose of this initiative is to prepare the department to better manage themselves and to think strategically. Initiative number two is an accredited Parks and Recreation Department. This is an aspirational goal. It's required for a department to achieve peak effectiveness. Pursuing accreditation provides an external benchmark of performance and should bring the department together in pursuit of this goal. Initiative number three is explore value of external partnerships. This one, with declining resources, both financially and physically, the exploration of community partners allows the department to better understand possibilities for collaborative programming and space in the future. Finally, the staff spent time reflecting on the mission and the vision. The Parks and Recreation Department did not have its own mission. It kind of had just the city's overall mission. So we talked a lot about that internally. And we came up with a new mission and vision statement that we could really get on board with propelling the department to the future. So our new mission statement is to provide accessible, diverse, and inclusive experiences that enhance the quality of life and create a sense of place and community for all. And then the vision is Bettendorf Parks and Recreation is recognized as a champion for community and personal growth through lifelong recreational experiences. So I would say the process of this strategic plan was to bring the department together. I know and obviously in the past three years, at least since I've taken over as director, there's been a lot of movement in the department, a lot of shifts between buildings, between facilities, between staffing. And so I felt this was a good time to kind of really set our minds and our department in a good direction by having concrete goals and a working plan that we could refer to. This is the first strategic plan for Parks and Recreation. And I really think it's going to help us in our all aspects of what we do. Our programs, our facilities, where we want to be, what we want to do for the community. And I think it's a good groundwork to move us through in the next three to four years or so. So with that, if you have any questions for me or Linda and Ron have graciously joined us today. If anyone has any questions about the plan itself or the survey results or anything like that.
Linda and Ron, do you have anything that you wanted to add before we go to questions? We appreciate you being here and the work you did.
No, thank you, your honor. No, I think that summarizes it fairly well. I think the.
So you guys do all the hard work and then you put your mouthpiece over here, Kim gets to come present? Is that how this works? All right, well, way to go, Kim.
Thank you.
You know, perhaps one of the unique thing is nothing's bad. I mean, the data is overwhelmingly very positive. You're picking out negatives because we're at the bottom, but they're not statistically horrible things that are happening. And they're very easy tactical things to. And, and they're very easy tactical things to, to pick up on, lighting and those type of issues. So it was really interesting. So what do you do when everything's going pretty well? Well, you try to make it better.
Right.
I think that's what this plan reveals.
Excellent, thank you.
No, I would concur. My, my role was really looking at the statistics and doing the survey and those kinds of things. And the, the results of the survey, first of all, the number of people who took it was amazing. We say that five percent is representative of the community as a whole. And when we look at not just the number of people who took it, but the number of households they represent, assuming that if one person took it, it's talking about their family's experiences, you had like a third of your residents.
Wow.
Input into this survey. So I think it's pretty representative. There are a few holes where maybe not everybody's voice was equal in how it's heard, but I think that also gives you some opportunities for follow-up as well. And I'd echo what Ron said, everything is going very well, which is a good thing.
Excellent, so thank you to all those who responded to the survey. We appreciate that, stay tuned, we need your input, and this is one way you can have input into your city government. Thank you to Lisa and to Frank, who served on this committee. You guys have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think it was very.
I do, but.
Go ahead, Lisa, sorry, Frank.
Frank can go, I just cut him off.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, I was just going to say a big thanks to Kim. I mean, we've, we discovered we have not had a vision plan or a strategic, strategic plan previously, and Kim did a lot of work with her staff pulling all this together, so good job, Kim.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Frank?
I echo that also, and I thought, I thought it was very educational to sit there and hear what you brought to the table, Kim. And thought it was very well presented, and hope we can continue.
Thank you.
Any questions for the group? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Safety in the parks was probably not awful, but it was one of the lower things. But safety in the city is top-notch. So was there anything specifically mentioned about why people feel less safe in our parks than they do in other parts of the city? Was there any kind of clue about that at all?
I don't recall any specifics in the, where they could kind of elaborate more on comments. It could possibly be just the vandalism sort of uptick that we've been having in the parks. And I don't know that for sure, but there's been a lot of, for some reason, the kids need things to do, and they like to come into the parks overnight and do silly things and graffiti. I don't know if that, that played a role in it, but that was kind of what I gleaned from it, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
We, we asked the question about quality of the parks of everything in the survey in two different ways. We asked them how important it was to you, and we asked them to rate their quality. And all of it's on a four-point scale, where four-point oh means absolute top priority, and four-point oh means absolute top quality score. And most of these rated at a three-point oh or above, which means more good than bad. So it's a B, if you want to think in academic terms. So when we looked at safety, it rated right in the middle of the pack in terms of quality at a two-point seven-four. The highest thing rated were the trails at a two-point eight-two. The lowest were the restrooms at a two-point five. So really, middle of the pack, and probably not statistically significant from what was at the top, which means that the difference between the two-point eight and the two-point seven happened by chance, right? Somebody just ticked that. When we ask about the importance, safety rises to the top, it's a three-point-one-three, followed by maintenance at three-point-one. The lowest was the pickleball courts at a two-point-six-nine. Little bit of a difference there between the top and the bottom. When we look at and we say, okay, let's take this data together and let's say, so where are the problems? We look at the difference between them. If something is of low quality, but people don't think it's important, then you put less weight on it, right? You, you worry about it a little bit more. If it's something where they think it's really important and it's a lower quality, then its priority rises. And so for safety, that was number two in the difference between its quality and its importance rating. So number one was the restrooms. It was a three-point oh on importance, two-point-five on quality, which is a difference of point five. Restrooms was a difference of point three-nine. So that's why we say it might be something to think about, but I would also reiterate what both Ron and Kim said. Everything was positive, so when you're looking at a negative, it's all relative. So that was a very long explanation.
Thank you.
Great.
When I was on the park board a long time ago, we had a, a map that we had made up that where all the parks were located, but we also kind of said, well, really, we really need a park here because the kids can't get to this, to these other parks without going across the major street or whatever. Is the park advisory, who's working on?
So that's going to be part of the master planning process.
Okay.
So right now, we are working with ByState on the park's master plan, which will have all of that information, all of that information updated, and also all the demographic information and the GIS information that Taylor Buzzwick has been helping with. So that way, we kind of can tell, like, we're kind of along with the comp plan, where we might need parks in the future, what areas are we missing that we could need a little pocket park, or what amenities would be suited best in which. Like restrooms, in all of the parks, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add, Taylor? Is that, okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Jerry and Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. So my follow-up question is, you said that restroom's rated high, but the quality was not so high. What are we doing about that? Or is this just another report that we say, wow, nice report, and stick it on a shelf?
So, I mean, we're working with Parks Maintenance. They do a great job with keeping everything clean as best we can with the resources that we have. You know, there are parks that have non-plumb restrooms. There are parks that have restrooms that are being used by kids and need to be closed. We try as best we can to keep the frequent restrooms, the ones along the trails, the ones in Crow Creek, the ones in our high-use areas, in good condition, veterans, all of those. But it is something that I think we'll have to invest some dollars in in order to either update them or bring them up to standards.
Mr. Schmidt, did you have anything you wanted to add, since your department was thanked, I think, by Kim for the hard work that you are doing?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, one of the things too that, that was mentioned is the safety in the parks, but in the vandalism, as Kim alluded to, has been an issue the past two years. A lot of the porcelain toilets that, that were located in several of these restrooms have been busted off the walls and toilets broken and whatnot. So we've been going through the process of putting in the budget, some, some dollars to actually re-put, you know, reinstall those with a stainless steel fixture, which is hard to break off the wall and whatnot. And we do have twenty-two restrooms that staff clean daily in our parks when they're open. And one of the things too that we are looking at is potentially running fiber to some of the restrooms, and we're going to be looking at the cost of that to actually put some locking mechanism on those doors at certain hours so that individuals can't get into them and damage them at night, which we're seeing a lot of issues that are happening after hours, after the parks are closed.
Thank you.
They covered me.
And they covered you, all right. Any other questions at all? Well, thank you very much, Ron and Lynn, appreciate you being here. Thank you, Kim. Good news, and we'll keep working on premier parks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two consent agenda items, K and L. And for the presentation of these items, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mark Hunt.
Your Honor, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Welcome, you have the floor.
Thank you, just one second, pull my slides up. Busy presentation.
It is a presentation evening, that's all right.
Your Honor, I have two cases to present. If you're okay, I'll start with the first one.
Yes, please.
Twenty-four eighty fifty-third Avenue is a site development plan, change of use. Actually, that's the theme of tonight, both of these are going to be change of uses. You don't get a lot of these, most time under code, if the use is rather small, we don't take it through planning and zoning. These are large enough changes of use, kind of a ten percent of the, of the area, or the use is so different than what was there before that we do bring it to planning and zoning and city council. Twenty-four eighty fifty-third Avenue, also known as Lot Fifty-two Heather Glenn at St. Andrews Edition. The applicant is Shabat Hubavich, if that's correct pronunciation, probably not. It is a site development plan, change of use for religious assembly. You'll probably recognize this if you think about where Red Grove grows to be, or Hemisphere's Bistro. Talking about this portion of the building, really, we're talking about a little spot behind it. I'll give you more detail here. As planners, we always want to check on our future land use plan and our current zone to make sure they're aligned. They are, and the proposed use of religious assembly is allowed. So we're good to go from a planning and zoning perspective as far as the land use and zoning. I threw the, the landscape plan kind of early in the presentation, more early than I usually do, because the landscape's not changing, so the landscape plan is the same, but it does really show you what the site looks like, and I think it'll help you understand the change that's going to happen right in this rear section, the north of the building here. So, quick note, no change in landscaping or lighting, that all stays the same. Here's the site plan, and there's a box in gray, it's about eight hundred square feet. This will be the religious assembly, this will be the, the portion of the building that will be used for the proposed use. Everything else at this point in the building is staying the same. So you're going to build this structure, attach it to the building, and have a small religious assembly for what's like a spa, if you will. So all of our bulk standards, floor area ratio, parking, ADA parking, landscaping, as I mentioned, all stays the same. We're good there. We're going to take out three parking spaces, but we're still a little bit overparked, so we have enough parking spaces, even with this new use coming in. What you see in red maybe is not very clear right now, but what you see in red are the names of the businesses that are there. None of those are changing at this moment. There is a potential future change here, where this could become a larger religious assembly space. If that happens, our curatory review says the parking still works. Here's an elevation showing the, again, that north side of the building where you'll be entering for the, for the religious assembly use, again, kind of a smaller use, more like a spa, if you will. Kind of a picture of how that might look, just one entry. And it's the same height as the building, and all of our bulk standards, setbacks, all works just fine. Positive staff recommendation, we did have one condition, and that's that any additional changes to uses in the strip mall occupancies shall require, require evaluation relevant to city departments to determine procedures necessary to prove the change pockets for your building modifications. Always the saying, if you change your uses, we got to make sure they fit with code. Got to make parking, they have to be allowed uses. That's kind of the same with any strip mall, but here, because we have such a, such a new use coming in, we want to make sure we emphasize that point. We had a planning and zoning commission on January seventeenth, meeting on January seventeenth, and was voted unanimously to recommend approval within this body. I'd be happy to answer your questions if there are any.
Questions for Mark? We'll start with Greg, then we'll go to Greg, and then we'll come over here.
This is getting closer to some homes to the north. Is this something that's going to be changing noise levels or anything?
I don't think so. The, the use is.
It's not, it's not an outdoor, it's a.
No, it's indoor use, it's, it's within that enclosure, about eight hundred square feet. It's really designed to be used by one or two people at a time.
Okay.
At this moment, so really not much would change.
Thank you.
You're back. Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Angie'd probably appreciate the fact that I asked this question. Between the time of the planning and zoning meeting and this evening, have we received any correspondence directly or indirectly from any resident regarding this particular matter?
I received one written comment. It was a question to the original site plan. The, the person saw the original site plan, which was part of our larger packet, and confused that for the new site plan. We answered that question, we took care of it, it was noted at council, or I'm sorry, at planning and zoning, and that that letter was entered into the record. That's the only written comments I'm aware of.
I was just curious, anything between P and Z and tonight?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you, sir.
And I, and I believe that that interested person was the person on the next-door post.
Hard for me to say.
I believe it was. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the last year, we've been working on a fee, our fee schedule for various functions in your department. Do we charge a fee for change of use?
Yeah.
We do, okay.
Yeah, it's the, it's the site, it's a site plan fee, so that's a hundred-dollar fee.
Thank you.
Lisa, any questions?
No.
Nick?
All good, thank you, Your Honor.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda, it's consent K.
Still moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We'll take it up on consent, let's move to consent L, please.
We'll move south on Devil's Glen Road, thirty-fifty-one Devil's Glen Road. You want to remember this as, as a former Burke's dry cleaner, that's the most recent user. We have an applicant, Eddie and Fanny Chin. Again, a change of use, we're going from a retail establishment for dry cleaning to a general restaurant. I'll note here, you'll see it on, this is kind of an important point, I'll, I'll delay it a little bit longer. All the projects going to take place on this parcel, there's two parcels involved here. This, this portion to the east is reserved for parking in the future. We'll talk about that a little bit. Again, we're planners, we like to look at our future land use map and our zoning and make sure those are both okay for the proposed use and the current zoning. Everything aligns, so we're good there. And we have a general restaurant user coming in to what was a former dry cleaner. A little bit closer up arrow of the site, I want you to notice Middle Drive here. It is a private access easement, if you will. That someday will hopefully become a city road. And so as we work through development along this corridor, we are slowly absorbing pieces of that into traditional right-of-way. And we've kind of saved ourselves that, or reserved ourselves that right should this, this site ever develop to a larger, maybe using this area for parking in the future, that would trigger the right-of-way conversion here. I think I talked to a couple of you about that offline previously. So here's the site plan. The building envelope is not changing, so we don't have any building additions going on here. In fact, we're hardly going to make the building envelope, if you will, a little smaller so that these parking spots will work. Obviously, they're going to have to take this overhangout, so that will be going away. Inside the building, it'll be rearranged on the inside, but the building envelope, if you will, the four walls, don't get any larger. We have plenty, plenty of parking, we have plenty of ADA parking. And if we need more parking, we can just go to the, to the east here, where we have that extra lot that the owner, the petitioner, also owns. At this time, the way they're planning on building out the restaurant, they won't be using the entire building, so it looks like they're going to be able to contain within their larger parking lot, or within their original parking lot, and not have to use that larger parking lot, excuse me. So staff's recommendation is positive, includes the following conditions. Again, we're going to make sure they follow all plumbing and mechanical code. Just threw that one in there because this is such a drastic change of use, we want the, the petitioner to be aware of, they got a lot to do to comply with our codes. Change the building from one occupancy type to another. We also note, number two, that will be requiring dedication right-of-way if those lots, the lots to the east, if you will, the lot to the east becomes developed. And we want to make sure we have the appropriate parking spaces as well as shown in number three. And then that they also yield to any overground, underground, or overhead utilities. And if they require permissions and easements during that development, we still have some overhead lines in this area. Really, the big one is that we have access, should that eastern lot develop, that we get the right-of-way in place. We had a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to this body on January seventeenth, 2024. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This time I'll go this way first, any questions? Questions? Lisa, questions? Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor, I do have a question. Mark, if the, that lot to the east does in fact. Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a question. Mark, if the that lot to the east does in fact become developed, does that I know that section of Devil's Glen generally comes under question with all the different sort of access points to those buildings being so close. Would staff ever consider changing that to make that that new access road on the east side of that back lot essentially the main entrance for the the buildings that are the businesses that are accessible from that road or would be accessible from that road if that right of way changed?
That's a great question. We certainly won't take away the Devil's Glen Road access. That's not going to go away. But I do see a future where we have Middle Drive becoming a city road down the road, no pun intended, and that that become a way for people to access those businesses and those developments. And it might be one that people become becomes the main entrance of choice without any force of the city, just natural gravity, if you will. Once we have right of way there, we have the road striped and those turning entry points cut in, people will just start doing it. So I think that's a part of our long range transportation plan, if you will, and will happen kind of naturally. But we won't deny access off Devil's Glen Road.
And so thank you. Thank you for that answer, Mark. Just for clarification, that middle, what would become this middle lane or whatever, does that connect to the inlet between Autozone and Taco Bell then? Is that where that would connect to?
Yep. So you go down to Middle Road and then all the way north to where the Aldi is eventually is our goal. And right now, for example, where the car wash is coming in, if you remember the car wash case, you see this see this large kind of red mark, red markings here, that is now right of way. So as these developments are happening, we're capturing right of way. And it's really a benefit to to these businesses because they have a road that they don't have to maintain. Because right now, they got to maintain all this stuff. And once it becomes right of way, it becomes a city road, the maintenance falls to us, which is probably take a headache off the business owner.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And just to point out, Your Honor, in the long range planning and the work we did with Aldi and the owner of that property, we did dedicate on the north side so that eventually this would connect to this road on the south side. It may it may take many years for that to happen, but it shows of both a north, south, north and south opportunity in the long range thought process.
That'll take pressure, I think, as you're alluding to, that'll take the pressure off Devil's Glen Road where we have turning movements that are sometimes conflicting. And we'll have a parallel north, south here, Middle Drive in the future, whenever that day may be.
Up to Belmont?
Up to Belmont.
Yes, sir. The road to Belmont. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, let's entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda is consent L.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take that up tomorrow night as consent L. Please take a look at the consent agenda. If there's any particular item on consent a council member would like to discuss now is the time. Greg A.
Just there. We got it. Greg A. and Greg J.
And they sound alike, so it's not going to work. We'll figure it out.
I, item I, traffic signal poles at Forest Grove and Devil's Glen. Is that going to be set up now for eventual traffic north of Forest Grove? I know there's really nothing up there, maybe a farm or something. But are we going to, when we widen Devil's Glen, is that going to be that intersection finished off?
That is correct. The intersection won't be, I mean, we won't be doing any improvements to the north of that.
On the north side.
Point, but but the traffic signalization will be set up to accept the future growth that would potentially happen to the north of Forest Grove.
Okay, because I still want to make sure we get that right of way in case that we have an opportunity to get a bridge.
Yes, sir.
North. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other item on consent? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item N, we're converting that to changing that to R2. So at R2, the only thing that we can build there is single family housing, correct?
That's correct. R2 is a single family. It's just a slightly smaller lot than the R1.
That's what I thought. Yep. Okay, thank you.
That for that entire piece of property, Mark, or the back portion?
I'm sorry, Your Honor. I started packing up just a little bit early. Read through my notes real quick.
I can probably find it in the packet. I don't know.
Package shows it to be just the back portion.
That's what I thought. Okay, in the back side.
Yeah, it's just it's just on the back side. It's not the entire property. It's going to allow two residential lots to come into what is kind of a family owned compound, if you will.
All right, any other consent items to discuss? Lisa or Nick? Okay. Can I please entertain a motion to approve all remaining consent agenda items for consideration tomorrow night?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up those items. Anything on operational you have questions about at this time? Or you could certainly ask before tomorrow night. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. On item 10, I think last meeting I brought up the question about, did we want to do that conditionally to prevent a gas station there? And have we given any more thought to that or are we comfortable with a gas station there?
Well, I think we were at the second reading, so.
We're at the second reading, yep.
We decided last time it passed.
Yeah, we closed the public hearing without doing that. So I I I think the understanding was that we didn't, counsel was not of the opinion that it needed to be conditional was was the inference from that.
Yeah, I think it passed unanimously.
That's right.
Yep. Okay. Okay, thank you. Other items on the operational agenda? All right. I have no items to add, anything from council to be added. We do have three council members not here in person too. Thank you very much for joining us via Zoom. And we discussed that we'd like to have the executive session tomorrow evening. It's on tomorrow night's agenda, but since we couldn't all be here in person tonight, let's do that tomorrow night. And to do so, I'd like to entertain a motion to remove the executive session from the committee of the whole agenda as it is also on the agenda for tomorrow night. Is there any magic language other than that?
You nailed it.
Oh, man. Thank you. Look at that.
I'll make the motion for purposes of discussion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Is there discussion on this item? Greg?
Your Honor, on the consent agenda, which we just approved, there is a resolution changing the compensation for the administrator. I think procedurally, you're going to have the consent agenda approved before you go into executive session?
Oh, we could change that.
So you might need to pull that resolution out and have it be on regular agenda after the executive session tomorrow evening?
Yep.
It wasn't your ban. That's the way we set it up. We thought we were going to do it tonight.
So we can amend the agenda. That makes good sense.
I'd so move, Your Honor.
Okay. And a second to amend it. All right, all those in favor of the executive session happening tomorrow night, signified by aye?
Aye.
And all those in favor of the agenda modification as discussed, signified by aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed either? I think I heard everybody unanimously passing both. Okay. All right. Anything else on the executive session motion or thoughts for this evening? Since we went a little longer than normal, it probably is okay that we move it to tomorrow. It's relatively small agenda.
I'm just fine with it, Your Honor. If there's any question from me. Thank you very much for asking, Your Honor. We'll ask you tomorrow night, though.
Please have a motion to adjourn. Stand adjourned. Good work, everybody.
But he's back for the night.
Kathleen can pick.